Okay, so we'll call to order.
We're good.
Okay, we're gonna call to order, is that okay? Or you need to start?
Oh, your phone.
Oh, all right. Oh, I was waiting for you, sorry.
Oh, totally.
All right, so we'll call to order. Okay, so why don't we just jump right in and we will get right into the review. I know we have a meeting Tuesday.
Tuesday.
And then we also have a meeting the following Tuesday with the Board of Selectment in Boylston.
So, do you want to start with the budget, the revised budget timeline? Because since you brought up the Boylston meeting. So, everything's the same going down to where it's bolded.
Okay.
So, on Thursday, January 12th, we have a meeting with the Berlin Capital Committee to review the fiscal year '24 capital budget requests, and that's at 5 o'clock. I believe it's Zoom, but I'm waiting for confirmation.
Nice.
And then Tuesday, January 17th, is the Boylston Selectmen Meeting that you just mentioned. It's at 6:30 at the Town Hall.
Do you know where that is?
I don't know the exact room, but I can find that out too.
And I've been, as I'm, you walk in, it's a very little room, it's, people get confused. You just walk straight in, hopefully I'll be with Carol.
Yeah, I will, yeah, we both plan on going, so she'll know.
Yeah, and then they all sit at the table.
It's right over here, right?
Yep, it's literally here. Yeah, it's like in the building over there, there she is.
Yeah, it is over there, not over here. That would be the road.
Yeah, you're right. I do that all the time. I'm like right there, and my husband's like, Julie, that's all north. That's because it was.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello, hello.
How are you?
I'm fine. How are you?
Good.
So that's the first time you're meeting with Boylston, is this January 17th? Or have you already met them?
Yes, this'll be the first time.
This is the first one.
Um, I think they're somewhat aware because we did go to a select board meeting to ask for the $35,000. So they're aware that the school has a lot of needs.
Yep, yep. And then on Wednesday, February 8th, we are meeting with the Berlin Finance Committee meeting again. This will be our second meeting, and that's at 7:30. And again, I'm presuming it's Zoom, but I can update you as I get told. They seem like they do Zoom, so.
So do you, or is Mike joining or do you?
Yeah. I was just gonna.
Would you prefer person?
We, we were hoping that last time when we went, in fact, we assumed that it was, but it was, that didn't happen that way when we got there. Um, ourselves and a capital, people from the capital planning, John, he came too, thinking it was in person. So, I think if we can find out ahead of time, it's just easier because of all the papers to look at.
Of course, that's what I was thinking.
They were switching from different, different documents, so, yeah.
Yep. And one of the other things that I didn't put on here, but just to bring to your attention, is for this current year's capital plan, we have on there the LED sign for Berlin Memorial.
Yes.
But, um, that's not gonna be happening. So, the, before I started and before our new facility director started, Dan, they did equipment platform repair for the Tohonto High School and, for Berlin and Berlin Memorial. And that went over budget by $17,000. So, since we're not doing the LED sign, which was for $18,000 that they approved, we're going to that meeting to ask them if they would be willing to swap it. So would they be willing to pay the overages, overage, since we're not, since they have the savings with the sign? So that's on Monday, that's Monday, I'm going to that.
So no sign? Are you, are you and Mike going to this meeting?
Yeah, we could, what? So it's Monday night, it's on Zoom.
I'm going to.
You're going too? Is Mike aware?
Yes.
Yes, he's aware.
I haven't spoken with him.
He's definitely part of that.
Since the holiday, have you talked to Mike?
Monday, yes, Monday. So this Monday.
Well, this Monday.
This coming Monday.
The 9th.
9th.
Nancy and I will always go together.
Yes, yep.
And then any school committee member available would be helpful to come as well.
What, um, who, what committee is this?
So this.
The 9th? Wait, you guys got so much.
Oh, Select Board, okay. Yeah, so it's the Select Board, and then the Select Board will bring it to the Capital Committee and the FinCom for us, so we don't have to attend all three.
Makes sense, okay.
Yep, so they offered to do that.
In Berlin.
In Berlin, yes.
So you're going to take that sign money and put it toward?
Hopefully, if they approve it, yep. So I think they were having difficulty with the sign after speaking with John Campbell, getting a permit to actually get the sign. It seemed like there was a lot of difficulty with that.
Yep.
So at this point in time, it's not gonna happen. John said maybe put it on for fiscal year '25. So for the three-year capital plan, I have it on there right now for '25. So that's where I stand with that.
Yep. Okay.
Thank you. Yep. So that covers the changes to the budget timeline.
Okay.
For the '24 budget.
So let me just get this straight. So you have to go Monday, the 9th, to Berlin, and then you are going Thursday, the 12th, to the Capital Committee? Or it's just Zoom?
I believe it's Zoom. I believe all Berlin's meetings are Zoom. I need to confirm that, but I think they are.
They, yeah, we meet in person for some meetings.
Oh, you do? Okay, so I could be wrong, so.
We do.
The capital planning, he was pretty surprised that it wasn't a person, it was just an individual. His name is John or Jan.
I was telling, we bought his house.
How funny is that?
Yep, he's such a nice man, and his wife is great.
So he, he seemed to think it was happening there, so.
In person.
Yeah.
The one Monday nights definitely Zoom, because they sent it to me.
I have the Berlin Select Board.
Monday's not on the budget thing because that's just about the sign.
Right, right.
Yep, that's the Select, you said that's Zoom? Their Select Board, that's Zoom.
Yep, that's.
Our Select Board's all, Boylston is all in person.
It is, yeah.
Always, yeah.
So I'm gonna try to find out by Tuesday if these are Zoom or live, so I have, so you'll know by Tuesday.
I think it, I heard too, I think the Select Board in Berlin is Zoom, I forget why.
Yeah.
Also, maybe this is, because I don't think that, well, I know they've been Zoom. Well, because they extended it, and then I remember they extended the emergency order so that you can continue doing Zoom meetings, and I think they just took advantage of that.
Yeah.
There are actually in Boilston, the Master Steering Plan Committee still meets on Zoom. Yeah, we have CPA meets on Zoom still. Yeah, so there's certain groups that still do Zoom. It's kind of convenient for certain groups, but Select Board, it's nice to have the in-person. Like you said, when you have documents in front of you, it's easier.
It's definitely easier.
It's very hard to.
It's very hard.
Discovered that.
The capital meeting.
Well, and for the public, because the Select Board, like, there's a lot of public that comes, so that's tough.
Comments and so on, but this was not like that at all with the Finance Committee. It was a very different experience, but we got through.
We did, we did, we did.
Very kind and receptive and was fine. And they, they worked with us to put the documents up so we could look at everything we needed to, but just cumbersome, I don't know.
I'm just wondering if there's, if we request to go in person.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm, I'm gonna ask for, because I have other committees too that, because I have to meet with FinCom too for something else, and I didn't recognize it was.
Last year, we met with them in person, I remember going in.
Oh.
But I don't know why this, I don't know why they've changed it.
Okay, all right, I'll do some research. I'll ask and see, um, all right, and then I'll get back to you.
You all, I didn't monitor.
I'm good with this, the timeline, yep.
Yeah, I think you had a.
Timeline, timeline discussion too, that I really, I would wanna sit down maybe our next subcommittee meeting, and I can collect dates to outline with everyone additional presentations that we would wanna make around the budget. PTOs, I'm going to BEF in February, CPAC, Council on Aging, Senior Centers.
Yep.
Anybody who will listen to us, I mean, go to the mall, I don't, but, but seriously, we, we need to.
Yep.
I will run some chats, some coffee chat kinds of things that people can come and hear more about this. But let's set up dates, I'll get the, collect the dates we know, and then we'll add some other dates onto that. And just, I think what I'm looking for, depending on which town I'm in, are maybe school committee reps, one, anybody should be able to join me for those discussions, just to have you there.
Yep.
I know that we're working together on this. So let me put that list together, and maybe even next week, I'm feeling the crunch of, like, the race against time.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, because.
Good idea, Carol.
Yeah, we've only got a couple of weeks left really, and then, what, we vote on the budget, what, is it the week after February break?
28th.
28th. Yeah, so that's literally right when we get back from February break. Nobody's gonna be doing anything the week of February break. You guys work that week?
We can.
No, I'm, no, 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 I just didn't know, is the office open that week?
It, it is, yes, we don't close down, right. So in other words, we can be here, like, we might be here a day or two, we can take a vacation, but we would be open.
I think most people are gonna be either away or, like, I don't think that's gonna be a good week for doing presentations, you know? Yeah, because people are gonna be.
But if the Council on Aging has their meeting.
Well, I guess you're right, yeah.
During that, during that time, if they're meeting, I would speak to them on that day.
That week, yeah.
We wanna make sure.
Do you want me to find out?
I don't know how often they meet.
I'll find out.
I wanna go to 19 Carter.
Okay.
In Berlin and talk with the.
I'll get in touch with the Council on Aging Director, because I know her.
And set up that time with 19 Carter too.
Okay. Does Boylston have a Council on Aging?
Definitely.
Julie likes you.
Definitely, yeah. I don't know. I could ask our director who it is, but I know they do.
Okay. Yeah, so I mean, Carol, like, you're going to BEF on Thursday, a week from Thursday, a week from yesterday.
It's a February date, though.
No, it's next Thursday, January 12th.
Yes, it is, you're absolutely right, you are right, it is.
There will be another one in February, but I think it'll be like the 9th or the 16th, maybe.
I think so too, yeah.
But you could, if you're presenting the district improvement plan, then we could talk about the budget too.
Absolutely.
And that's kind of how I, you know, I said, you know, where, I said, I think Carol wants to get in front of all the groups that are trying to raise money, PTO, PTO met last night.
Yeah.
They're the first Thursday of the month.
Yeah.
Did the light speeds come up?
Did you go?
Didn't, you didn't.
But they do it on Zoom too.
Oh, okay.
So it's in person and Zoom, so like, for some reason, if you were like.
I was scheduled for them too in December, but they canceled the meeting.
They did, yes.
So then I couldn't make it yesterday, yesterday.
It was yesterday.
And so then I said, well, I'll go to the February 1.
Yeah, so they'll probably be like February 2nd. Yeah, the, the school, the PTO shouldn't meet on the same day, doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, they do, usually, I've gone between, like, between them.
Oh, Berlin meets the same day as Boylston PTO, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
Tohonto meets on Monday nights at least, but Berlin.
I'm not finding all those dates.
It's the first Thursday of the month for Boylston, for BEF, yes, okay, is that Berlin as well, okay. A lot of this stuff, I think it's just a huge disconnect in communication. It's not that anyone is purposefully.
Oh, no, no, no.
You know what I mean, I think like, Berlin people probably are just like, what? We have no idea what they're doing, and Boylston people are like, I didn't know they did that.
Well, but you also don't have the sense of one district until you get up to middle, you know, you sort of are just at your elementary school, so you wouldn't, there would be no connection with Boylston for Berlin, elementary folks, and likewise, the other way.
Exactly.
But for people that have to attend both, like yourselves or anyone else is in the district.
And we either stagger it by the month, or we all split the time and just go, spend half the meeting with one group and then go over to, to the other group and meet the other half, so.
Right, because you don't have to sit there and listen to all the business that they discuss.
Yeah, and it depends, sometimes they just go to be there.
Yeah.
So if that's the case, it's just, that's like last, last time when I was in, I just wanted to say hi. But this time, I'd want a little more time to obviously be able to share the, the plan and discuss it and ask for questions and so on.
Do you want me to talk to Jackie Hofsis, or do you have a contact and see when, or are you already on the calendar for the second to present that, or do you want me to coordinate that for you?
Don't worry, it was supposed to put me on the calendar, so let me.
Because Jackie Hofsis is the president for Boylston. Yep, and I know, I'm good friends with Kristin Milton and Erin Mertog as well are on the board for the PTO, so I can reach out to any of them, I know them well, I know Jackie as well.
Yep, it just, you know, just confirm.
Just shoot them an email, or, like, I'm up Facebook with all of them.
Put me right in there anyway. Oh, and also it's at 6:30 over in.
It's at 6:30, I believe, yeah, they do 6:30. BEF is always 7:30.
Yep.
At someone's house.
Wine.
Yeah. All right, so I can reach out, I'll just, I'll just touch base with them and just kinda so, because I think people were just kinda like, well, do I need to do anything, like, or, you know, is Carol just coming to say hi, or what's going on? So I'll just kinda like.
About this.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Do you want to, are you available to come that night?
February 2nd?
Yeah.
I should be, Matt's out of town, but let me, my dad, my dad should be able to take the kids. It's, the school is like around the corner from my house, so. It's at 6:30?
6:30.
I'll, I'll reach out to them. I don't know, is that confirmed the date too? I'll have to, I'll double check.
Yes, the 2nd, yeah.
Oh, it is.
I have, I'm looking right at it on Don Marie's calendar.
Okay.
I asked her to, if she would put it on for me, but, and hopefully, I think she'd probably, but just make sure.
Yep.
Save me from having to contact them.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how PTO works, I know for BEF, like, she has no idea what we're doing, like, for the agenda or whatever. So I don't know, like, the PTO people are doing their own agenda, or if she's putting the agenda together for them.
I don't know.
Yeah, I have no idea how that works.
Don Marie, yeah.
Don Marie, yeah, right, yeah. I know for BEF, she has nothing to do with.
PTO.
Isn't that weird?
Yeah.
So Boylston, we were talking about this, this is a huge conversation that we probably need to have, and I don't know if it needs to be this group or a different group. So Boylston Education Foundation raises money for teacher grants. So like, if teachers request, like, tools for the classroom. But PTO, I guess, I was talking to some people from PTO, and we went to the PTO meeting, did you come with us? No, it was Laurie, Mike and I, so we went to the Boylston PTO meeting. Were you there that time too? I can't remember, it was in September.
Yeah, I thought so.
And a huge thing they brought up, two things, like, they're concerned they are raised, they've raised money for, usually for assemblies, but they also, our PTO also does grants, does yours do grants as well? So they're concerned about the, yes, the kind of, the crossover. And the other thing they were concerned about is, you know, they got the chairs for the library, and they got a few supplies for other classrooms, and they're kinda like, you know, this should be something that the school pays for. So I think there needs to be, and again, I don't know who's like in charge of this, but maybe there needs to be like some clarification, and a few people have brought up merging the groups. I don't know if that's the right thing, I don't know. I think at the end of the day, we wanna see how can we raise the most money.
And I think we talked about it, because the next day was the, or shortly after that was our walkthrough in Boylston, that's where we were having the conversation, that it came up about the furniture and the.
Yes, 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 so you probably, yeah, but you probably didn't go to the, yeah, the meeting was, no, Mike didn't go to the meeting, it was me, Laurie and Adam were at the PTO meeting.
Mike and Adam, they were on the tour.
But that, yes, the next day we did the tour, yep, 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 yep. But yes, that, we did bring, that was, the PTO had brought that to us because we went, when Don Marie was, did her presentation, we went, the, the school committee members from Boylston went to the PTO meeting, and those were the things that were brought up to us. And that kinda slipped through the cracks with everything that was, has been going on in the fall. But that was something, you know, I think that Adam told them about the budget and finance subcommittee, and he was like, this is something we're working on, we're trying to streamline this process and make sure these groups are all on the same page, and, you know, that we're putting things into the budget that are school budget things, and they're raising money for things that should be fundraising things. And I don't know, it seems like there are blurred lines, and I don't really.
With, with BEF, if they, do the teachers apply for the grants?
Yes.
Yeah.
And we have, like, and that's why Carol was gonna go, but like, it's a very strict process, so just the members can see the grant applications, and then we vote. And then nobody from the outside is supposed to come. So we just did our vote, it was in December.
Yep.
And then some, you're allowed to like reapply, but there's very strict rules that have to be met for the application. There's dollar limits that we set every year.
Yep.
So it's no, our grants aren't high, they're, you know, between like $500 and maybe like $1,500.
Right.
Which really, like, if you need something big, you're not gonna be able to get it through these grants, but it more like for tools, like, for kindergarten, every year we get like the sand, the mulch, toys, bubbles. First grade, we get like different tools, like toys for the classroom.
Great.
It's cool, yeah, it's a good source so the teachers don't have to.
Right. It's always the other things, other than curriculum, it shouldn't be. And I used to review all of the grants because they.
The lines have become blurred.
Right.
Because like, we just got the makey makeys for technology, that's curriculum. They are awesome, right? But that was a huge ask like last year, so, but that's, that's, that's curriculum to me.
That's right on the line, yeah.
So we did, yeah, we did, the BEF paid for that. What was the other one, some of the ones this year, well, the reading.
The reading, the, the library books.
The books, yeah, we had, and actually, two people submitted the same thing.
We had that in Sutton, but the superintendent was on that committee.
And, you know, Ace was always very involved with that, and so he would, and that was one thing we noted this time, and Ace pretty much went over everything with a fine tooth comb. He was very versed in how it worked and what they needed and what they didn't need. And so we didn't see any of the stuff until it was reviewed by Ace. And it was pretty much like stuff that we really needed. And this year, because Don Marie is new, she probably had no idea, we saw everything. So there were, there was a duplicate.
Oh.
There were a few things, we were like, ah, like someone requested furniture for their classroom, like a, like a couch.
No, no.
For a fifth grade classroom, or like, futon or whatever. Yeah, so that's the kind of stuff, like Ace, so yeah, so definitely, I think, definitely needs a little bit of guidance.
You snort on camera.
No, you should have seen our reaction.
Yeah, you need to have an administrator vetting those before they go.
Yes, and she did sign all of them, but I don't know if she actually knew. I don't think she, she's brand new, so.
Right.
Again, again, you, I don't even know if you were looked, looked at them, or if, yeah, so.
Usually I have in the past.
But at the same time, what's the PTO getting grants for? And like, is this something we can streamline where it's like, okay, this group is just raising money for grants, and this group is just raising money for this? And the school department is gonna put the rest of this stuff in the budget? Because right now, it seems like the lines are a little bit blurred.
Right, because any curriculum we get for Boylston should be the curriculum we get for Berlin.
And it's definitely, yes.
Right, that's why, yeah.
That was Mrs. T's whole thing, I think you guys already had makey makeys, and Boylston did not, so.
Well, we had your Maker Space, which was a whole separate.
Yeah, so we, Boylston didn't have.
Well, parent created that with the support of the school.
Yeah, but like, that's kinda correct, I think that's curriculum, and it should be equitable across both. Yeah, there's just a lot of stuff.
Yeah, so, anyway, as far as the dates, let me put together the meeting dates for those. And next, we should probably meet again, I mean, fairly soon. I'll just send you the list, and you can maybe.
Yep.
If you're available to sign up with me to go, and it said to Nancy, I, I don't wanna tie her up for every single one of them.
Yeah, you guys should not, yeah.
I don't mind going, though.
I will leave it up to you, but don't feel, but I, I think that I can.
Yeah, especially this time of year, I know. So what, so the groups, do you wanna try to make a quick list now, or?
We can, or do you wanna go on to?
Do you have, what else do you wanna review today? The budget stuff?
I had a question to talk about with the fiscal year '24 budget, just procedural wise. So we're all on the same page in how we're thinking to proceed, and then just quickly go over the '23.
All right.
So it's up to you what you're gonna do next.
You wanna do that and then do the list at the end? Yeah, that's a good idea.
All right. So my question with the '24, so we have, since we're on the budget timeline anyways, how do you want us to proceed internally? Do you want, you know, right now, we know we're at a 20, what is it, 23% increase for our budget. Do you want us to try to scale that down? Do, like, what, do you wanna keep it as is? Like, what, what's, do you know what I'm saying?
No, say it again.
So do you want us to scale it down? Do you want us to do, to keep it as is?
You mean for?
Or prepare, like, prepare.
Prepare for.
Right.
Oh, if, all right.
Yeah, I was insured, yeah.
If we have to make cuts, you, should we be, should we be prepared that we're not gonna get everything we want?
Where we could take that from. So you can start to see where, what we're thinking. But the other piece too, Megan, is, I don't, at this point, I don't feel like it has, it's cuts, it's shifting it across the three plans. So if we don't do it this year, we're gonna do it next year, or the year after that. Some of these things are more pressing than others.
Yeah.
And I think we have a handle on what those are. We can do something like that and go over it. If, if this does not, if we're not feeling this is going to be well received, or we are told you need to come down, we have a Plan B.
Yeah, it's probably a good idea, right?
Then you have to be comfortable with, I mean, going forward, that's really.
Where the committee.
At least you can see what that might look like.
Doesn't mean that's gonna happen, but it, that's, you know, this, but it's good to have, you know, that internally, we can kinda work out.
And then we would feel.
Forecast a future as to what can slide a little bit and what.
Yeah, what happens if one town is for it, and another one says, heck, no, this is not happening, we're not.
Yeah.
Because it's two-town meeting votes, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
I think if it's a no, it's a no, right? It's, it's.
But then the vote in one.
Yeah.
So, I mean, like, seriously, should we consult Myrick about that? Because if one town votes yes, they want this, you're not, you can't do both, and the other votes no. Because like, let's say there's people that have students in Boylston Elementary, and they're like, yes, yes, yes. And Boylston's, I'm not saying, I'm just.
No, I understand, of course, of course.
And they're expecting like, okay, well, we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do this, and we're gonna do this for my school now. I voted, and it passed, and it won.
There are other districts like this, and it does have to pass.
For both towns, so we need to make sure that message is clear.
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying? So that people don't think like, oh, all I have to do is go vote, and if everyone in this town wants it. Because I, I can just see people getting angry if their voice from their vote is not.
Yep. Well, and I think that's something to communicate, why we do these presentations in the school committee meetings, in the Select Board, any place we can, and these other meetings too, to say that as well. We need support from both communities, because this is one, one school district.
Yeah.[1618.24]
Yeah, that's, keep driving that.
I know. So the select board is aware, because even the select board might not be aware because I feel like our select board is all Boylston. They don't know anything about Berlin.
Right.
Which, why would they be, yeah?
No, they, we have, they know municipality stuff and budget.
Yes, yes.
So they must all be aware, I'd say, it has to pass.
Yeah, I'm not sure, because they're new to the regionalization too, you know. It's only a couple of years, so I don't know, I don't know, I can't speak to how much they're aware of how this unfolds. But I think it's a great question to answer, like, what happens if? We could even do something about that. I mean, to put that out there as a, in, in some kind of newsletter format or show everything you wanted to know about the budget and have questions answered.
Yeah.
So that's another, another option.
Yeah.
I think it's such a, you know, we're, we're small towns, right? Um, but for being such small towns, um, there's really not a lot offered for kids in our towns, right? And it's just not. Our rec departments are not great. I know that because I sit on it. And I know Boylston's is the same, comparatively speaking, right? So we have our schools and we have great education here in the schools. And some of the schools is saying, we need this, we need this, right? Um, it's not, it's not a want, it's, it's a need. And if we're not, if the towns are not going to give to the rec departments, which they're not.
They don't.
They don't. Um, then as towns, like, you, I think we have responsibility. You've got to take care of your, your kids here. And if, if the only avenue you can do that is through the schools, because you're not exhausting the others, then you, you commit there. So I understand that there may, you know, when we go, they're not going to be completely satisfied because it is such a big ask. But then I think we have to be prepared to say, um, this is what we have for our kids and this is what we, we provide for them. This is top-notch education here, because we're, we're not doing the other.
Right.
So we need, we need you to commit here. So would there be a scale back?
That's my question.
In my opinion, I would say.
That's a great message.
It's, it's a no, it needs to go, it's campaigning.
We're not doing, this is what we need.
And so many things have evolved, right?
Campaign.
We have, um.
That was great.
Right, and we have, the schools have been cut everywhere, time and time again, year over, year over, year over, year. Cut, 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 cut. We're unique a little bit because we're cutting the schools, but we're not giving on the other end for the youth either. Um, and now we're coming out of this pandemic where the schools are in dire need of everything that's being asked.
And that's what we were saying when we go into these meetings with the towns. These are things we need.
Yeah.
The, 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 even the, the level-funded budget is a reflection of needs we have to address.
Exactly right.
District placements, perfect example. These are the, we can't avoid this. It's not an option.
It's not an option.
Educating, I think it's around the education too, for these individuals that, you know, we can't pick and choose these kinds of things. It's all, has to all be in there, so.
It has to all be in there. But I think educating people are right. So there's a generation of people that don't even understand special ed, what's required, right? And it's not their fault, they just don't know. But once they're, it's explained to them through these various meetings that you'll have, then the perspective might change, right?
Right.
Well, hopefully, I mean, hopefully, what we're able to do is, is enlighten a, a, a good number of, of stakeholders from the towns who now have, can make a different form decision. And I think that's something we were hearing in years past too. When you, when you hit folks with a budget at the town meeting and they hear about it, see it for the first time. We're not going to get everybody in town unless we want to knock on doors, but, um, but we can get a good number of them.
That's right.
In different ways. And let me know too, I mean, if there's other things that I haven't thought of, I don't know all the avenues. It could, it could even be at somebody's house.
Sporting events.
Sporting events, it could be.
When the spring hits, it's going to start being soccer, baseball, um.
Or groups of friends that you have a neighborhood gathering and you say, hey, can you come over and we'll meet? Get together with this neighborhood and talk about it with them. Even if they're opposed or not feeling strong about the decision to have a budget this large, at least they have a chance to articulate their concerns, their fears. And it's going to come down to, to, to what is this going to impact, how is this going to impact through their wallets? Their budgets, right?
Of course.
And certainly for folks on fixed incomes, we're ever mindful of that too.
Of course, right. What does that mean for them?
Yeah, what does that mean for them?
Yeah. So that brings up a really good question. So we go to these boards and we're saying, this is the ask, this is like what, the money we need from the towns. Whose job is it to figure out how much money my taxes are going to increase by? Do you know what I'm saying? Because I think that the voters are going to want to know. I'm not saying to the penny, but are my taxes increasing 10%? Are my taxes increasing 5%? Is this going to be a one-time $1,000, you know what I'm saying?
Right.
That is going to be the biggest thing that's going to get voters. Because you made a great point, there are people that are living paycheck to paycheck and people that physically just can't and they may have kids and they're like, this is the best I can do. It's better than putting them in a different district, it's still a great education and this is all I can do. And no, I'm not voting for this because I can't afford this right now. And some of those people, you know, that could be a good chunk of people right now as we head into a recession. Um, people might be losing jobs, whatever. So I think the bottom line is, and maybe this is something we can ask these, the select board meeting. You know, is it the Board of Assessor that, you know, is it the, what's her name? Uh, we met with her.
Dawn.
Not Dawn, no, remember she, um, in Boylston?
I think it would be Assessor.
Who's yours?
I would think so.
I don't know. But the Assessor, she presented at that select board meeting that me, you and Laurie went to about how she kept the tax rate in Boylston, the corporate tax rate is going to stay the same as, remember that present?
I don't remember, I don't know who she was.
Oh, I can't think of her name, but yes, I think it's her, she's the, the town assessor.
I think that would be the one to start with.
Yeah.
Right, or is it FinCom? But I don't think FinCom does, I think it's her. I, I think it's the Board of Assessors and they probably have a board. So I think that might be something, you know, as we head into these meetings. You know, I don't know Capitol Committee, Finance, you said Select Board.
Probably Select Board.
For Burl.
And I think they give that assessment amount in February. I think that starts to come through.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, people are going, when am I going to have to pay this? Because remember, Carol, we were sitting at that select board meeting, we're listening to the, they were, everyone was, it's all about dollars and taxes. What am I going to pay this?
I already got my tax bill in my town.
It would be next, for next year.
Right, I already got it.
It would be for February.
Oh yeah, so it's the year after, sorry.
Yeah, because we'll vote at the May town meeting. But if they do, like, if they do like, um, a special assessment, I've gotten bills before. It might be a separate tax bill, maybe it's just an additional tax bill.
Mm-hmm.
People are going to want to know this stuff before they're voting on it. And like, that was the whole thing, the only reason I know is the CPA. People were literally like, tell me, and they had that chart. Did you see that chart?
Sure did, yes.
So it showed you, literally you could calculate how much money it was going to cost. And we go, oh, it's $100 for us, yeah, I'm going to vote yes on this. We're not going to, over $100, we're not going to turn something like that down.
It's a great point.
But some people might be like, 100 is different than 1,000 is different than 5,000.
Yeah. You guys have CPA?
It passed, just as passed.
Game changer.
Yeah, but.
It's fantastic.
Such a long story.
It takes a while to get a whole.
Yes, that's, yeah, so I think.
It's good. I'm on the CPA committee in Berlin.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, it's a great, oh my god.
Alright, so, so that, we'll ask that at the Board of Select.
That sounds great.
Alright.
Yep.
Because that's something when we're going to these meetings, like you're saying, meeting at people's neighborhoods and like, meeting at the, people are going to want to know, well, how, how much?
Yeah, fair question.
Alright, ask the Assessor. Yeah, I don't know anyone in Berlin.
Assessor's office.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
I will tell you, with my district, they were building a new school. And they, when we went to the meeting, they had like a big billboard. And it said, if your house range is, you know, your value was this, it will increase by this.
Yes, yeah.
I don't know who did it.
Yes.
But, um, it was done. So I, I can look and try to find out for you too.
Members of the assessors, the, the board members, Rebecca Donohuee? I don't remember, she was not her, I couldn't know her.
No, she is, she is just the, um, yeah, so like, and so my mom used to be on the Board of Assessors in Shoesbury. So those are like volunteers, or like, they're like school committee members. I think they get a stipend like $1,000 a year, $500 a year. They get voted in or whatever. And then they actually go to the houses and assess the values. But the, the woman, the employee.
Evanowsky?
I don't know her, I can't remember her name.
That's a blur.
She's the, um, in Boylston, she's, I've had a go about my tax bill. If you go into the town offices in Boylston, she sits in there. So even it might be worth, you know, I can take a ride down and just, or maybe when I leave here, I'll go take a walk over and just say, hey.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are the only names I have.
Yeah, I can't think of her name. She's the one that, she works in the office, she runs the office. Like, if you go into the town hall in Boylston, I can't think of her name, but I don't think.
Doesn't ring a bell, yeah, it doesn't ring a bell to me that that's, that's the person we saw.
But she's the one that gave that presentation. And I'm, I'm guessing the board votes, the board probably has to vote. There's probably Board of Assessors in both towns, they probably have to vote on what to do. Because remember, she presented in Boylston, they decided to keep the corporate and the residential tax rates the same.
Yep.
And they gave their reasoning for the vote. And then she went through and said, this is what your taxes would be. Remember, she's went through the increases.
Do you, are you going, do you want to go find that out?
Yeah, after, after this, I'll do that.
Great.
Sure. Kids are at school.
So it sounds like we'll stay with what we have and not do an alternate shift.
Yeah, I think that, I agree with Julie. Like, it's either this or, or.
I think that's, yes. I think so. It's aggressive and.
Which is totally fine, I just wanted to make sure, like, inside and we're all on the same page.
So then, so then what happens if it doesn't pass? So.
It would be.
What it is, with nothing.
Yeah, we will go to a 1/10 budget and it's, um, difficult.
Until we cut down to what they want.
We will receive the funds that we, the amount of funds that we are getting right now. Not, no increase at all until it's, then it works off of a 1.
It's a special town meeting.
Yeah, it's tough. So it's a little bit of a gamble.
Can we put two votes on there?
It's a big gamble, not a little gamble.
It's a huge gamble, because if it doesn't pass, then you get, you don't get an increase. And even last year, we got an increase, right? Because it didn't bother, yeah, we had like a 3% increase or what, what.
Yeah, we usually do get.
Was that voted at town meeting?
Mm-hmm, always voted at town, mayish.
So it was all.
So it's, it's a gamble.
It's a gamble. And the other huge thing, Julie, and I learned this too, I'm sure you guys do it. You have to get people to go to town meeting, because think about, it's May. Anyone with little kids, you got sports, you got dance recitals, you got graduations, you got.
Do childcare.
Everything. You need childcare because you can't bring your kids to town meeting. We tried that one time.
You actually can.
Oh, right.
Yeah, but you can, residents can.
You can, you can. Um, yep, but people probably don't.
No, they don't want, no, because it goes so long.
You do have to, yes, it's long, it's at night, they want it, yep, it's a school night.
We've done that for things that we want to.
Well, like when the school, the high school was built, we had childcare.
Oh, yeah, see.
They were passing that. It's something to consider.
Oh, maybe, well, we could get like the Leo, like the Leos or whatever.
Yeah, Leos could do, yeah, National Society, kids do it. We can organize, the PTOs could help organize that.
Actually, that's a great idea for that town meeting, so that people can.
And maybe even having, we could appeal to the towns to, to put the school items first.
They have a procedure that they follow, so we're usually, at, at, at least, well, in Berlin, it's like a third of the way into the meeting, but sometimes it seems like it's early in the meeting, but if there's something before that, that's a controversial piece, we run into that where you think it's going to be over in five minutes and it goes on. And so we never really know.
I think you can request, we requested.
But they have been early, like, even when they're earlier, if you have something before that, unless, unless they put it on first.
It's categories.
First, but, but something before, even like one or two things before could, could take a long time.
I know, I know, it depends.
I think they must do it by like categories, because I remember we had to go for like something, when we were building our house, that was the last category. It was the very end. But yeah, I think the school stuff is closer to the beginning. But yeah, to your point, if the first, maybe it's finance, who knows, what, whatever category comes first. But yeah, we should request and see what's.
It's still a good idea to have.
So maybe that's something we ask at the town meeting as well, I mean, at the select board meeting, right? Because they do the warrants for the town meeting, right? And I, I feel like the earlier we bring this stuff up, it might sound crazy, but it's like, then it's on their radar. So the excuse of, well, I didn't know, it's too late, goes off the table. Because if we're bringing this stuff up in January and the squeaky wheel gets the grease and we keep whispering in their ears right along the way, then yeah. So we should probably bring that up next week.
I know in the past, when we have requested to move things to the front, it was because this is a parent issue.
Yeah.
And they do have children, and they were, they did accommodate, yeah. Um, I can't remember what we, what we asked for, but they, they did accommodate it.
I wonder if it was a playground.
I don't know if it was that or the pellet stove or the pellet stove, yeah.
In Berlin?
Yeah.
You might just want to ask Eloise, who you talked to about that.
Yeah, totally, I'll do that.
Helpful there.
It was a select board.
Okay, well.
Yeah, I'll do that, I'll do that. I'll check in with Eloise.
I can reach out to Seth or Matt if you want and ask.
And I'll check in the Leos for childcare too, or NHS, Student Council.
They just did a babysitting thing in, um, Boylston.
My son's in the Leos.
Oh, really? I saw it, it was so cute.
Yeah, they do a good job. Mrs. Meekum does a great job with them.
I mean, and as we go to these select board meetings and these FinCom meetings too, they will be giving us feedback and they will be giving us recommended percentages and, you know. Well, and then we can revisit and really, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, we can, we'll get more of a feel.
Yes, yes.
And.
Right, and they'll get our feel too.
Yeah.
Right.
So that's why I think it's really important that the school committee shows up, we show up.
Yeah, agree, agree.
Very important that we all show.
I completely agree.
Julie, you just said it perfectly. You really did.
You need to present.
Yeah, because that was, but.
They've heard this from me before, they've heard it. I'll say it again.
So here's my fear.
Let me interrupt you for a second. There are people on these committees that feel, that support that. That the youth are very underrepresented, at least, I don't know if it's in Boylston, but it's down in Berlin.
So, and Carol, you can attest to this, we went to a select board meeting, we were asking for $35,000 and there are people on this committee, but we were also, the finance committee was supposed to show up to that meeting. And zero of the members showed up because they said, no, we're not giving you this $35,000. So, I mean, they had made their minds up, they didn't even want to hear us, they didn't show up. They said, no, you don't need this, this isn't the process, you're, we're not giving this to you. We made a plea to the Board of Select and we said, fine, we'll put it on the warrant, we'll take it to town meeting, we'll get all these people here. And they said, well, we don't want to go against FinCom. And it's, well, if this is the rule, this is the rule, we'll get the signatures, we'll get the 100 signature, whatever we need to do. And they were like, okay, and then we got a miraculous $35,000 donation. So that's my fear, Nancy, is that, and I want to be clear. I think just because some of these people that work for the towns might say, no, I don't think we need this, that doesn't mean the people that live in the town, the voters, agree with that position. And we need to keep that in mind when we go to these meetings, because the majority of people that are out voting aren't showing up at these meetings.
Right.
Yeah, very well said too.
And so, yeah, so I think, because that was how I felt at that meeting that we went to.
Are these on the same night?
And then the people in the audience were so supportive of us.
They were.
Oh my god, they were, it was unbelievable.
Yeah.
And then someone was like, I don't even have kids, but I think that education should be top important.
Of course, give them money.
If we don't have kids.
Give them money, well, this is, and this was for the facilities.
There was a facilities assessment at BEF, because the roof is leaking. I know. I was like, Laurie, I was getting heated. I was like, this is an emergency.
Are these town meetings same day?
Yes, of course.
Oh.
That also is interesting. So we have, in the past, split individuals from up here and we decide where the might, perhaps the most questions will come from. Um, but the superintendent has been known to drive between the two. Um, but we'll be on the phones and texting with one another to say, they took the vote, they're okay. Um, they voted it in, so we can stay in one, another place, like, so that we don't have to necessarily move. But that's how it's, that's how it's been done. We're just in constant communication. Like, the finance director last year was over in the Boylston meeting. Um, but no questions came up, but he was there anticipating that more questions would come from that group. Okay. But, so that's how we do it, we're just communicating, usually it's through text with, and with the school committee as well.
And I didn't even go to town. I don't know, I was wondering if they, do, do the towns communicate? Do you know? You may not know this. About their, how they write that warrant, oh, yeah. Probably not.
I suspect not, but I don't know that for sure.
Do you want me, why don't we ask, if I'm going to ask the select board about moving it on the agenda, I'll ask.
Yeah, I'll ask Eloise.
Do they?
I mean, especially considering it's a regional district, that would be a consideration that they should probably have.
Yep.
And I think if I recall, it all rolled into one big budget for the town.
Yeah.
It's presented that way, but not like, they don't isolate the, the school, they, they.
Correct.
Right, it's just all one big one.
Yeah, but you have it in front of you.
Right, but folks are looking at it and saying, wow.
Wow, yeah, through the warrant.
You're looking right at the percentages, yeah.
The percentages would be what gets people. But I also think it's confusing, like, even as a numbers person myself, because I've seen the warrants and I'm like, I mean, I'll comb through them, but I'm just like, if you don't know spreadsheets and numbers, you might look at this and be like, no, it's too much for me.
That's why it's such a critical piece, is educating people beforehand, you're 100% right.
And the other piece we look at, I mean, the, the townspeople consider two of the other departments and what the ask is for that year. If it's a high ask for that year, because they also need their, their equipment as the towns are growing. Sure. Think about the fire and the police departments and needing more services or resources. Could be trucks, it could be individuals, right?
Yep.
I, I think that John and Antiana is also putting in his budget or considering the SRO.[1706.82] I, I think that John and Antiana is also putting in his budget or considering the SRO, remember we still.
Oh, yeah, yes. Well, that's another increase, but yes.
Yeah, but that's a great idea.
They said that would be like three hundred thousand, right?
I thought it was a hundred, but, oh, maybe they were doing over.
If they do it for one, I thought they were gonna do it for, it was a hundred thousand per school, I thought, or they're just gonna do one that's shared.
One and try to share that individual.
Between Tohoto and BES.
BES.
My, my brother-in-law's a state trooper, and he said, I asked him about SROs and what his take on it, and he said, absolutely. There shouldn't be a school in the Commonwealth that doesn't have it.
Not in today's world.
No.
Yeah.
He said, there's a safety piece for sure, but, but aside from that, kids, you wanna have kids being able to have that relationship, because then you're building it in your community also, he said it's a complete win.
Officer Babbitt, and we had, I still remember, and she did Dare to Keep Kids Off Drugs. Remember Dare to Keep? You remember her? Of course she does, she was very, I still remember, but they went in, in addition to being the SRO, she went in and did presentations for the kids and loved it. I mean, I just remember loving her.
Yeah.
Um, boys and girls, she had the glasses, yeah.
That's so great.
And, yeah, I, I mean, so, yeah, I mean, maybe that could be part of the position too, is like not only, you know, being there to patrol the schools, but also, you know, going in and doing presentations, safety, drugs, all that, yeah, it's amazing.
Trained in this area, so they all, they all have.
Yeah, it'll be awesome. Yeah, I still, I still remember that Dare to Keep a Kid Off Drugs.
Oh, yeah, of course, yeah.
I still remember. And greet, and there was a song.
Yes, 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 yes.
All right, so wait, so what did we decide, are we gonna, so are we gonna leave, the budget is all or nothing, is that what we decided?
I think, I think we, we just have a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
But I think, I think it can happen, I'd like to see the percentages too, on what that translates to.
Okay.
For people.
You mean the numbers for taxes, yes, so that has to be done before, well before the vote.
But we don't wanna give, we don't wanna say all of a sudden in a month, okay, things have changed after we meet with all these people, and then you ladies will have to scramble, unless you've already done it, to kinda rework it.
Well, we, we can do that.
Don't worry about, we're fine.
Efficient. So first, the first question is, get the assessors to figure out, so that.
Okay.
But, uh, uh, so we're decided it's all or nothing right now.
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds good.
I think it does, it does.
Yep.
I like it. It would be very difficult to, at least from my perspective, I think, because everybody's gonna have a different idea of what they think is most important.
Yeah, we just have to.
Based on what affects their own children.
Yeah, we have to give to our youth, we have to give to everybody in the community, but.
Okay, do you wanna go over the twenty-three budget real quick, it'll be quick.
I was just thinking, as you said that, it would be, it would be, I think, one of the things we also do wanna do, and I know Bob spoke about this at one of the meetings, is try to connect the seniors in the towns with the schools more, because those are community buildings.
Yes, yes, yes.
Offering, you know, access to those, and, and just reminding them that they're entitled to be able to utilize those buildings as well. Or bringing them in, in some capacity with the students there.
Mr. Re-Reader thing, or do a re-community read, there's so many different things.
That would be something I would wanna talk about going into those meetings too.
Yep, like have people, you know, retired come in, talk about so much, like, yeah, yeah, I agree.
That's a great idea.
So Nancy, this is the current year budget.
So this is the current year budget.
Is where we're sitting right now.
Yep.
For six more months.
Yep, so I have it broken out by district wide on the top, and then on the bottom by the three schools, with an explanation of significant variances. As you look at this, I just want you to remember that there's, there's several items that are not encumbered, so your remaining budget balance.
Yeah.
Will not be that. Repairs for facilities aren't encumbered, a lot of supplies aren't encumbered, conferences, memberships, professional development in IT. We are fortunate in some, we do have savings in a couple of areas, such as health insurance and special ed transportation. Just, the special ed transportation, it's just movement amongst students, and health came in lower, less people just choose different health plans, and they move around.
Yep.
Those funds have been transferred to other areas that are in need. The one, if you look, so we could quickly go through them, if you look at Berlin Memorial, the, if you look in the last column that says budget balance, you'll see under instructual, an instructual support. So that is your, your principals teach, anybody, your, anybody who supports a student, special education, paraprofessionals, teachers, your supplies support, support students, is, is showing a positive balance of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So, we currently have a teacher who's out on leave and is not being paid. But then that is being washed out with another teacher who is covering that.
Filling that.
Right, who's under a different line item for long-term pay. So, it looks like we're saving, right, so it looks like we're saving all this money, but in reality, we're really not, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Um, you know, we currently do have savings with some supplies and materials and professional development, but most likely, you know, a lot of that is gonna be used as we proceed throughout the year.
Yeah.
So, but it gives you a good idea of where we stand.
Yep.
Under maintenance and operations, I increased the encumbrance for electricity due to the increased rates, so I'm monitoring that. I'm hoping I went too high, as we, I'm waiting for one more bill to come in to kinda get a really good feel on it, and see if that can be adjusted any further.
Because down the road, right Nancy, there's some of this money might have to be shifted into that.
Exactly, yeah.
For that bill, yeah.
Right, so it looks like we have a savings of a hundred and thirty-six thousand, like in Berlin is like where we'll land for the end of the year, but in reality, that's not gonna be the case.
Yeah, because there's unencumbered expenses.
Exactly.
And did you, are, are, did a bill come in with that increase already?
It did.
Was it?
One came in.
Did it match?
It was like half the month.
Yeah.
So it wasn't a full month, so that's why I wanted to, I'm looking forward to getting the December bill.
Okay.
And then I'll really have a.
Yep.
Feel. Um, and also in Berlin, we side, we signed up with a side company, and I can't remember the name. Sorry, I can't remember, can't remember the name, um, maybe Constellation?
Constellation Energy?
I, I believe, you know what, I think that's it, I'll double check it.
That actually is.
Yeah, which will help with savings, so I'm feeling hopeful that that can be lowered, but we'll be able to revisit that.
Yep, love it.
Yep, so then in Boylston, same thing, if you look at the instructual support line, it shows a savings of about a hundred and nineteen thousand. Now, that's because we haven't been able to fill two or three paraprofessional positions that we really need to fill.
Tony just hired one yesterday.
Oh, good, okay, so see, that would get eaten out.
Good, good.
Did they fill Ann Keen's role, was that role?
She's a long-term sub in that.
Yeah.
There's a long term, so that must have been a savings, right?
Yeah, so that shows a savings, but then the long-term sub's in a different line item, so.
Gotcha.
And then, um, we did have some new hires, so some new hires came in lower than the retirees salary-wise. It's kind of always where you end up getting most of your savings. So, I feel, I feel pretty good about that line item, and saying, and it's the exact same thing, under the maintenance and operations, we're watching electricity, and then we do have a little bit of a savings with the healthcare, and that added district will probably go away, because I'll probably, um, gonna use, I think I'm gonna change that for Tuesday's meeting and encumber it, and I'm gonna use circuit breaker funds instead. So there'll be a slight change for Tuesday's meeting. Um, so it's showing the savings, but, you know, it, it's all the same, it's all work in progress as you go throughout the year. Um, and same thing with Tohoto.
All right.
It's, it's exactly the same, every line item is the same, we have savings in the healthcare with Tohoto, and our instructual support is probably our largest. We have quite a bit of money left in IT with software and hardware, and I spoke to Paul before this meeting, and I kinda asked him on his feel, and he says he's kinda, um, at a standstill right now to see what happens with the budget. So if the budget goes through, then he can, it will decide how that money's used.
Oh, right.
Because a lot of that money, he was gonna use for a lot of stuff we put in the budget, so.
Got it.
So that's, that's kinda about thirty thousand that we're kinda standing on to see where we land.
Makes sense.
Yep, and that gives you an overall.
Yeah, you do a great job on your charts.
I love it.
You really do.
Thank you very much.
They're so clear.
Yep.
They're very clear.
Overall, we're, we're well, we're within our line items, we're not over budget in anything in particular, so.
Usually this is the time of the year we get a freeze.
Yes.
It's been.
Yep, but we're. Well, I did tell John in Berlin to kinda. Yeah.
But there's a freeze and there's a be conservative, right?
Yeah, yeah, he got the be conservative.
That's great. That's awesome, Nancy, thank you.
All right, so, do we wanna make a quick list of where the groups, I think between us two, we know the groups, right, Julie? So you wanna do Berlin first?
Yep. Now, do you want me to coordinate with these groups, um, Carol, and see what they have, and then send you their availability, or do you wanna do that? Because I can certainly do it.
I, I'll do the school groups.
Okay, good idea.
I'll do the school, and if you do the town.
Sure.
If you think of ones that, I mean, I definitely know obviously Nineteen Carter one, but you may know the people too that are connected to them, like those contacts, but I'll do the school, let me do the school one, so I'll do, um, the C, I'll do CPAC.
Okay.
And that goes across the two groups, and then.
CPAC for both.
Yeah.
What are they called, PTL now?
Yeah, PTL.
I, I saw that yesterday, I'm like, what's that? Oh, I got it, okay, PTL.
Yeah.
And then Nineteen Carter, is that still, um?
Yes.
You know.
Evy.
Evy, good. What is Nineteen Carter?
It's a community center. Um, it's a really neat community center, she, 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 she did a great job actually rebuilding this, I don't even know what it was even before that.
Isn't it like a church?
Church, okay, and she turned it into, it, it's artsy, it's theatrical, it's, she has seniors in there all the time for soup.
They have tea, they have music, like, um, what do you call it, coffeehouse?
Yeah, they have coffeehouse kinda thing, they have open mics, it's, it's private, it's not town.
You have to pay, what do you pay dues?
It's donations, she just collects, you know, donations, um, but, but the community members really built it up.
That's awesome.
It was amazing, yeah, and it's so, it's so artsy-fartsy in there, it's really, really nice, she did a really great job. And downstairs is a whole, um, youth area for little, little ones, and then all of it to the team.
Some of our Tohoto kids were even teaching like computer skills to, to the seniors.
Oh, what an awesome idea.
Yeah, she did a really, really great job with that. Um, and then everyone else that contributed to it.
Talk to the library too and see if they wanna host a.
Oh, yeah.
Meeting.
That's a good one.
I can contact those if you do the.
Perfect.
I'm just gonna say that's Carol, and then the senior center, if you can just do that one, because I don't know who that.
I'll do the seniors, yeah. Trying to think of what other groups.
Like what about your Parks and Rec, is that who runs your sports?
That's me, actually, but no, sports are separate from Parks and Recs, we just, we support them by taking care of the fields and blah, blah.
Boylston is.
Um.
I'll put out a couple of coffee chats to.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Gatherings maybe a morning and an afternoon or morning and a night kinda one.
I think when sports comes, like just going to sports games and talking to people on the sidelines, I don't know, is that.
I think that's too much legwork for you.
It's, it, I would say it's less about the legwork as the bank for your.
Yeah.
Yeah, you get a couple of people.
But you're not really.
Yeah.
Talking to a group, because I'd wanna bring the three-year plan, and I would wanna present.
People are, yeah.
Like this is what we need to look at.
There's so many people that do sports, though, it's like, how do you get that group?
You're really, and you're good at talking to people, I mean, that's kind of what you.
I talk to everybody.
You do, but you both do, I mean.
So that's, that'd be like our job. Laurie is so good, yeah, Laurie is like the Tohoto sidelines.
Right, you each have your, right.
And I'm like the little kids.
You have to get, yeah.
But you know what I'm, I'm trying to say, is there's so many people that are just ingrained in that life.
I know, I know.
And they don't do any of the other stuff.
So you know what you'd have to do is find a date where, even for Tohoto, where basketball ends, or what else happens, ski club ends, before the next season starts, and you probably have like a week, and that's when you can target that whole, even for, even, yeah, I think, yeah.
Baseball does start.
April.
Soccer, yeah, baseball and soccer start in April. Games wise, and.
We would just check the website for the, and they probably practice a couple of weeks before that, you probably have, usually it's, in my experience, there's a week where the kids have off, if even that, before they transition to the next, but that would be the target week that you wanna hit.
Well, yeah, you're right, it's like the last week in March.
Hold on an evening or whatever at somewhere, even at this, maybe at Tohoto or at, you know, I, I don't know, do you have a community center in Boylston? Or somewhere.
Tohoto, it's always like Switzerland of.
I know, I know. Yeah, you're totally right, yeah.
Is this off-base, or could you do something like Other Place Pub, I mean, that's where all the Boylston people go.
It just gets, I think it gets, it's too much.
Yeah, it's, they're not, it's more social and then they're like.
Distracted.
I was worried that we're, I would not want to infringe on, that's a pri, that's a.
No, it'd have to be, well, it'd have to be a planned thing, you'd have to go in there and say, I'd like to do this presentation here at six o'clock, because then people could stay and have their night out, but I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's a great.
I was just trying to think how you would, how you attract people to get out of their house on a Tuesday night in March.
Well, that's the thing, right, I mean, if people, you know.
Come listen to this.
You just have to get there.
You mentioned the coffee, is that coffee with the superintendent?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's a good idea, because people will, will have, they wanna talk to you about other things.
They're gonna want, and they're gonna wanna learn about this increase.
Some people will, yes.
Right, well, if it affects their taxes, they're gonna come out.
If it affects their taxes, yes, you're right, yes.
Yep.
We could go live on Facebook.
Now, that, social media is like a huge, those Boylston and Berlin, those town pages, that's a huge, the more I think about it, the more that election.
We could go live with a snippet of it, and then explain.
You'll get a bajillion comments.
There's a link, you can see where all these meetings will be discussed further in detail, all this ideal, please come.
Yeah, social media thing.
That's a good one. Mike and I can do, or Bob, Bob could do it, because he has a very nice way of speaking.
Yeah, he would be very good.
On social media, you think?
Just in general.
Yeah, he is, yeah.
Just wanna listen to him.
Yep.
Because he speaks really, just nicely.
He does, yeah, yeah.
Maybe Bob will go live.
Coffee, coffee chats, a morning, an afternoon, an evening, or a morning and an afternoon?
Hmm, coffee chats.
I would definitely do morning.
Yeah.
Um.
Where, though?
Workers. At the different, I could do like one in the Berlin Library.
Oh, yeah, love that, yeah, love that, love that.
And, yeah. One at Nineteen Carter, but, you know, just set it up that way. And I could talk to Evy about what she would suggest too for Nineteen Carter, but the libraries, it would definitely be, well, I could even do those in the evening there as well.
I like, I think that you're right, the mornings though, right?
Morning definitely, yeah, I agree with you.
People will have their kids in school, they'll come, yeah.
I don't know, getting them out in the evening for those, I think it's better getting them.
Yes.
Set meetings.
And I think too, like you might get a lot of parents that come during the day, kids are in school, like can come into the library, the kids are there, and come and listen.
Should we try a Zoom one?
I think it's convenient.
I think so, I, 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 I'm over.
I don't like it, well, there's two schools of thought about Zoom, and there's a lot of people that are like, I'm not listening to another Zoom meeting, because I don't think it's productive. But I think if you don't wanna leave your house, but you want information, there's a whole other subset of people that are like, all right, I'll do this, but I, like, I just, I, I don't have a good pulse on, like, would people.
Yeah, we could, they go to.
This whole thing, I don't have a good pulse, right?
It's not like we're not talking about it.
Right, that's true, they could go to the school community meeting here.
Well, let's see about it, we can always add on to the list, we can start here, um, Bo, you, did you wanna do Boylston?
Yeah, no, so I think that you have the PTO, right? PTO.
I'll do the PT, yeah, I'll do the CPAC.
You're gonna do.
PTO.
And they have a CPAC, and then, um, there's a Friends of the Lib, Friends of the Library.
I'll talk to them.
Um, Seth Riddinger's wife is on that, Emily.
And, um, Christie Stella.
Who is?
Christie Stella, isn't Christie?
I don't know her.
Oh, she spoke at the town meeting, at the, at the.
She's older kids.
The other town, um, what do you call, the special town meeting that we just had, I think she's on that too.
Oh, I don't know her, and I missed that meeting.
All of us are older.
Friends of the Library.
Right.
Some people that were, yeah, like so present, like you would.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yep.
She's great, I like her, she's a nice lady.
Um. And then, there is a council on aging in Boylston, but do we have a senior center?
I don't think you have a senior center. Because there was talk about doing a combined one with our council on aging.
Right, are they building a senior center?
In Boylston, I don't know, no, Berlin's not, there's a strong push for that.
I gotta ask Adam, Adam Wilber is a good contact.
You know what, he might also be able to think of some other places.
Oh, right.
Another.
Yes, he has, kinda has an idea and he's really good, that's pretty much his job, is he's professional fundraiser campaigner.
Right, that's right, yep.
So he might be a really useful resource. Alright, so at least we have like a rough list of.
Yep.
Groups we gotta hit, I think you're going next week to BEF, so that's a great, PTO in February, yeah, so we've already got.
And I'll make sure I'm on those.
I like the coffee chats, I like the social media thing.
Yep.
We can talk to Bob Tuesday.
Yep.
Let me have.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes. Love it.
Access TV.
Oh, yeah.
Great.
A pretty good way to get a message out.
Yep, thank you.
Like you've done in the past, right?
Yeah, if you have a presentation that you're planning on making.
Yep.
Making it into a video is a pretty effective way to share that information.
Yep.
Yeah, much fun. Great idea Carol, cause then we could just record one of the presentations.
Yep.
And get it out, right, is that, like if she's, if she's presenting at the board of, the select board meeting, or if you guys are both.
Well, even there's the, you know, there's a snippet from the school committee meeting when we presented the budget too. Somebody was mentioning, can we take that and put that on?
Yeah, I mean, you could, if you wanted to, I, I guess, you can decide how much effort you wanna put in.
You're thinking even more of just.
A lot.
Very focused, we come in and we record and then.
Talk to the camera, talk to your audience, you might have visuals that you put up on a screen. Make it a little more enjoyable to watch versus like the school committee meeting is one set shot.
I picture it, yeah.
Pretty boring.
Yeah.
Versus if you make kind of a dynamic video that grabs people's attention and is extremely direct. Um, it might be a little more effective.
That's so true.
Just an idea.
You and me, it'd be like, it'd be a.
You guys could do a dance.
And then we can put that on social media.
Yes.
We could.
Or at least a link to the public access.
That's what we'll call it, the dynamic duo. How, how far in advance do you need that?
It just depends on.
Your bookings.
No, 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 it just depends on what, how ambitious you are with the video, like what you want.
Okay.
Um, but, you know, from recording, if it was really basic, like recording to getting it out, like less than a week.
Okay.
What if it's, what if it's?
Let you know.
Dynamic.
Like with visuals and whatever, maybe two weeks? But that's just an estimate, and it also depends on the length as well, you know, if it's two hours long, it's gonna take me a lot longer than if it's fifteen minutes.
Right, you won't get people watching two hours.
No, I would.
Yeah.
Recommend to make it as concise as possible.
I'm thinking like a half hour.
I'd do shorter, right? You think thirty is too long?
Honestly, yeah, thirty minutes is pretty long, if you actually want people to watch it.
What do you, what do you say, suggest?
I'd say fifteen minutes or less.
Okay.
But that's just my experience.
No, I agree, I think people aren't, thirty minutes is like the.
Perspective.
Thirty minutes is like, uh, yeah, fifteen, somebody will be like, oh, a ten minute, I, I do the same thing when I'm online and I'm like, oh, this, this video is way too long, I'm not watching it.
Yeah.
But if it's like ten minutes, I'm like, oh yeah, I wanna see what this is about, I can learn about it in ten minutes.
Yeah.
But that's gonna be really tricky to get.
Yeah, but so the public access.
Budget.
Or people that are not leaving their house, so have the time sometimes to sit in for fifteen minutes. People, you're, you will go to a coffee chat or.
Yeah.
Something else, right?
Yeah.
These are people that for whatever reason are not gonna leave and want the information.
Yep.
So that's a very good idea.
There's also the possibility of doing two different versions, a longer, more detailed version and a short version.
Oh, that's another valid point.
I'm imagining it, so I'm trying, just.
Theatrical.
Like I'm, I'm like.
Yeah, but it's, I mean, it's public access TV and this is what it's here for, so.
Right, that's a good point.
Feel free to use it.
Right?
Yeah, I think we don't think of it, not because it isn't a valuable asset to us, but because we're all camera shy. Like it's like you do, no, you do, you do, you know what I mean?
Right.
Like, I'm gonna suggest it, cause I'll have to do that kinda thing, but.
Right.
You know, I think it's just our, but we have to get used to.
Yeah.
You know, to get, being used to, yeah.
Are you camera shy?
Um, I went, I think I told you, I went to school for journalism, so I was.
Oh.
So I'm, oh, I'm not.
Perfect.
But I'm also not like.
Yeah.
Like a former, like, I'm not like my, my colleague over in Boylston who put a camera and she's like, like, she's there, but I'm not afraid of it.
Yeah, girl, that's great.
I had to do that, I can't remember what I did.
Could we get the principals in on the?
That's great.
Video?
Boy, you can, we can do anything.
Teachers or?
We can do anything, we can, we can, that's why, what I'm thinking about.
Cause parents will be like, oh my god, are the kids, like, that's Mrs. S.
Yeah, yeah, it's okay, it's okay. No, it's great, that's a great suggestion.
Alright, so there's lots of.
My husband said to me, everything you have done in your life has prepared you for this.
I love that.
True.
Yeah, isn't it resonating, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's awesome.
That's, that's great.
So why don't we mull on this whole camera thing and then kinda make a decision next week what we all need to do?
Yeah, yeah, I can, and I can get the list together, some of the dates you find out about when the next meetings are.
Alright.
Do, um, if you can do January, February, March.
Yep.
Yep.
For their needs, just in case, cause if they're overlapping, like, you know, it would be hard to get to both, like.
Sure.
On the same day, like this PTO one, you know, we'll have to figure that one out.
And one of them can move it.
You're on February second, Berlin is two.
Yes.
Yes.
But they could, they could. Yes, six thirty, I think, they may start seven, seven thirty, the times.
Oh, is that six thirty in the?
May have been, uh, when they used to go, you know, it was social time after.
They tried to have it early.
It was different.
They didn't.
Exactly.
But Boylston is definitely six thirty at the second.
So I, I think if, if they're, you know, the request is, you know, people wanna work together, right? So if there's a request, hey, could we move ours back a week?
Yeah.
You know, in lieu of the budget and, you know, communicating this information, I think that would be well received. Because this is important, you know?
Yeah, I'm just looking.
So I can check with, I'll check with the PTO and see if they would, would not be opposed to moving theirs. If, if you're available, I mean, jeez Carol, this is a lot for you.
I, I expected this, I knew we were gonna do this, so I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay. We'll bring snacks.
That's why I said do freeze your dinners, because you won't be home.
I know. Right, right.
But no, that, I, I anticipated this and I think setting it up now is really helpful.
Okay, okay.
Being around, so.
So I'll do that and see, and if they can't, then maybe you can see if Jackie could move.
Yeah, I was just looking.
Hers. Um.
I have the PTO and the PTO meetings from six thirty to eight, but PTO meeting in. Boylston is, I have six thirty to seven thirty. And that's probably right, because actually the principal called me on the way home yesterday and probably was around that time. So maybe I go there first.
Oh, if it's on the same, uh, uh, different times?
Well, they're both, sorry, it's six thirty, but if I can go to one from, what do I usually do, like? Six, I've done, well, I really want more time, I'm thinking six thirty to seven.
Cause then questions, yeah, you gotta do different um nights.
It feels like that.
So you would want, so a half hour, you think is adequate time, or do you wanna do more to, so when I? I just wanna be able to give Kyle and Laura.
A half hour.
Half hour, okay.
Give them people some chance to ask questions and all tailored.
I just texted Erin Murtagh, she's the secretary, so um, I just, I just started the text with just wondering what date and time the PTO is. Meeting is next month, so maybe if you did like six thirty. To seven.
Seven, and then drive over to Berlin, and even if it runs over a little bit, takes me.
If Berlin is at seven thirty.
Berlin's, yeah.
Is Berlin at seven thirty?
I feel like it was at, what time did I practice?
Cause BEF, we do seven thirty.
I did get there earlier one, that last time I was.
Yes, it was a miscommunication, it was six thirty, right?
I thought it was six thirty, but I was waiting, I'm like, did, did somebody?
Because it was posted at six thirty, but it, it was supposed to be at seven, correct.
So I don't know what time that one.
Ah, yes, um, last night it must have been at seven thirty.
Oh.
Yeah, so Boylston's at six thirty, I believe, so she could do it on the same night and then it's kinda. Sometimes doing them on the same night, cause you're already.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, it might be easier.
If you wanted.
Then it's not two nights that you have to go.
I know, I know.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've done it, so just let's find out exactly.
Okay.
Boylston, where do you, where does?
Time.
Uh, yeah, so where does, where is uh, your PTO meeting?
Library at BMS.
Oh, so it's a twenty minute drive in between though.
Yeah, I've done, it.
Yeah.
As long as I get a half hour and I should be okay, and especially if they're meeting.
So if you go on at seven thirty, if their meetings start, and here's the thing though. If they start at seven thirty, you could even go on at eight.
It was seven.
At seven, at yours? Yeah, BEF is always seven thirty, because they do it to accommodate everyone that has sports and all that.
Right, that's so.
The home kids and get them to bed, yeah, we do seven thirty.
Right, cause I said to you, I remember saying to you, I'll, I'll come.
Yeah, it's Thursday, but you have another meet, wait, Thursday, the twelfth, so what do you have, you said you had PTO that day, but you just had PTO.
Right, I don't have, we had a, we had another meeting.
At six thirty.
That was a meeting with Berlin, but we don't have that now on Thursday.
Thursday, the twelfth, it is on the.
No, we'll take it back.
On.
But it's Zoom, it's at five.
Capital planning.
It's back on.
It's the capital planning at five PM, but it might be on Zoom, so you need to find out.
Really, I think I thought of this last night too, I thought I emailed you, I apologize if I didn't. Cause that was the one that we missed and then had to go to, so we were kinda, so it's.
So it's back on again.
Yes.
That is at five o'clock, right, five?
The five, yes, yes.
Berlin. Wait, am I putting it on the wrong date?
Yes.
That's a problem, hold on.
That's the, that's a problem.
I have the five o'clock Berlin. And that's in person?
I don't know, I will find out.
Cause that shouldn't take long though, right?
No, should be.
It doesn't matter because.
I don't know. Because I don't know what order we go, you know how last time, we, we uh, didn't go first.
But if you don't wanna come to BEF after that, then you don't have to.
You have plenty of time.
You, I know, but like then you don't get to eat dinner.
I would just request any meeting you go to to go first.
Work around this.
Well, she can go whenever she wants.
Absolutely, yeah. Laura says this, you know?
I could email them to, today.
She's super nice.
Just ask if we could go.
Yeah, just say, can we go at the beginning of the meeting and then she'll have time to go home and.
Time to get the one ten grill and get over to your meeting.
Ooh, wait, where's the one ten grill?
In Wester. Shrewsbury Street.
Oh, it's near in Berlin.
Right.
No, right in Berlin, yeah.
Yeah.
This one in Berlin?
Well, Hudson, Berlin.
And then we'll go both.
There you go. Alice, up in the, yeah, Commons, is that what it's called?
You could.
Near the Rotary?
Yeah, it's right there, actually, that's a great one ten grill, that's the one I always go to.
Never been.
It's clean, it's like, yeah, food's real good.
Where I live.
So much.
Grill's great.
Yeah.[1418.52]